I'd like to call and order the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee for this Hoffman Estates, June 13th, 2022. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
I'm looking for approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2022. And by the way, we do have a quorum.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing seen on all those in favor, say aye.
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 I think we have a roll call.
Roll call.
That's right, I guess we do.
Yep.
All right, we'll do a roll call just for you, Anna.
Thank you.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Stanton.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Now we have new business. One, request approval of Lakewood Center TIF reimbursement request number two in the amount of $45,872,929.44.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. This is a typical reimbursement request like we've done most recently with Barrington Square Town Center TIF, as well as with the Rozell Road TIF. With the Lakewood TIF, we've done one reimbursement, and that was last year, and then issued the two TIF notes that are associated with that TIF. The developers completed the majority of the east side renovations, including everything from the square to the ready-to-wear spaces, Colab, Fitlab, the conference rooms, the east entrance itself. And because of that, then they've now submitted their eligible costs over the past three years of the project in this second TIF. And I brought the paper just for example, so you know what, for dramatic effect. I'm sorry for trustees, Plafis and Noel that can't see it, but this is what, $45 million worth of, actually, just, this is the $27.8 million worth of TIF eligible costs. There's another 17 or plus million.
Do you take into account the trees we're going to cut down too for that?
I did not, although this probably could have been from all the landscaping. They did use their, there's a, there's a green initiative in there somewhere. Anyway, this is for TIF number two, or excuse me, for reimbursement number two for this TIF. The payments to each note, according to the note ordinance in the redevelopment agreement, would be 80% of this to Note A and 20% to Note B. The exact dollar amounts are in there in the memo. And the Finance Director then is authorized to issue and increase the TIF notes that are out there upon Village Board approval. Just as a reminder, this isn't coming out of a general fund or anything. It's being paid as the increment comes into the TIF. This last year, there was about, I believe about $300,000 that was reimbursed back to the developer, and hopefully then over the next 20-plus years, they'll get up to this, this 27-plus million that they would be eligible for. So I'll take any other questions.
Now, while we're indicating that it's 45 million plus, they're actually only going to be entitled to 13, almost 14 million, right?
Correct. It, just to refresh you, part of what we wanted to do, we, the village, when we did the redevelopment agreement, we didn't just want it to be, hey, we spent $50 million to, you know, to upgrade everything. It's filled back up again. Now pay us the 50 million. We wanted to make sure we were only 30% of what they spent. And so that's why, yes, you're correct, that of the eligible for reimbursement, only 13 million, 13.7 million is what would be added on to the TIF note.
Okay. Anyone else with any other questions up here? Mayor?
No, I just, I appreciate your emphasizing the fact that we're not sending them a $45 million check.
Correct.
This is going to come out of the money that they generate, and they'll get reimbursed for this if the project generates that kind of money.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Trustee Noel or trustee Plafis, any questions?
No question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. I need a roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Stanton.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills. Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
That leads us to reports for information only. The Planning Division Monthly Report. Anybody have any questions on that? That'll be received and filed. The second is the Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Any questions on that? That'll be received and filed. Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. We have Kevin right here. Any questions? That'll be received and filed. President's Report.
Yeah, a couple things. From the 2nd to the 6th of June, I was at the US Conference of Mayors meeting in Reno, Nevada. On Wednesday, the, it would be the 8th, trustee Stanton and I went to the, did the Monarch Butterfly Pledge at the CAC. It was a very well-attended event. And then, last few days, I was northeast of Memphis, Tennessee, celebrating my grandson's, Aiden's 12th birthday. But I did get back in time last night to attend a block party on Silver Pine. I want to thank all the trustees who covered everything in my absence. They always do. And they did one more time, so thank you very much. So yeah.
On behalf of all the trustees, you're welcome. All right, we have nothing in other items in review tonight, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those, well, roll call, please.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the General Administration Personnel Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on Monday, June 13th, 2022. Maybe we, maybe, ma'am, may we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Uh-uh, present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If I can get approval of the minutes for May 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Anyone have any questions, corrections, additions? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been passed. We have nothing under new business. We will move on to reports for information only. Number one is the Cable TV Monthly Report. Nothing to add. We will receive and file that. Number two is the Human Resources Management Monthly Report, and I see Patrick logging in right now, but we will go ahead and receive and file that one as well. And number three is the Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report. Differral is requested.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you. The deferral has been approved. Move on to President's Report.
Nothing else, trustee Arnett?
Okay, there's nothing in other. I do have one item to bring up. I found out too that we did lose a very dedicated member from HACPA, Claudia Elliott Nulis, passed away. She was one of our longest members with her husband Hank, so she just recently passed away. So my condolences to their family. And I see nothing in other or items in review. Maybe we have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Arnett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Moving right along, I'll call to order the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee meeting for June 13th, 2022. Can we please have a roll call, roll call, please?
Chairman Mills.
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Look for a motion to approve the minutes of May 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could, any comments, corrections? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call?
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Chairman Mills.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Thank you. We have one item under new business this evening, and that is an update presentation by Pace Suburban Bus. And if you could please introduce yourself for the record?
Good evening. I'm Melinda Metzger. I'm Executive Director for Pace, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and I got the opportunity to meet most of you in the tornado shelter. So, thank you very much. With me today is Steve Andrews, our North Cook County Community Relations Representative. And we're both happy to be here and have the opportunity to give you some updates on Pace service and our plans for the future. As most of you know, Mayor McLeod is on our board and really does a great job representing the region and keeping our service moving properly, as well as doing new innovative things. So we really appreciate your service to the Pace Board also. I've been with Pace for nearly 45 years, actually before Pace was even invented. I started out as an intern with the North Suburban Mass Transit District, Nortran. Many of you may know it. I left Nortran. I went to the RTA as Head of Operations Planning. And in 1984, when Pace came around, I went to Pace and did various jobs. My last job before being Executive Director was General Manager, Chief Operating Officer for Pace. The last two years has been very challenging, to say the least, for Pace, but we've utilized our time wisely. Our Board of Directors and staff have taken this time to revitalize our strategic vision, we call it driving innovation, and have concentrated on rebuilding our service after the devastating impacts of the pandemic. We no longer have the nine-to-five commute patterns that our system was geared up for. People need to be flexible. Our service needs to be flexible, and we need to accommodate their flexible schedules. We're now implementing many innovative and new services for the people who need them. With driving innovation as our foundation, my priorities are focusing on safety, equity, efficiency, and environmental stewardship. So the first initiative for our agency is to bring the agency into the era of zero emissions. Pace has always been a leader in this area, starting with our hybrid electric buses in 2012 and our CNG buses in 2016. Our 2022 budget provides the groundwork to move forward with electric vehicles and charging stations. And this is just the start of working towards our goal of a completely zero emission fleet by 2040. We are well on our way. In fact, we're ahead of schedule with the approval of a contract with Proterra for 20 buses, which will start arriving in March of this year. And today, we had our first electric bus, our 21 buses, but their first one was on your property. And unfortunately, not everyone got to see it because the winds came in and that vehicle had to get back to South Holland. So I let the maintenance employee get out of here before he got more involved in this tornado. Our agency is concurrently working on a fleet analysis and facility study, which is scheduled to be complete in July. So getting the electric buses is one step, but we need to have our routes analyzed to determine how far a bus can go on electric power. And all of our buildings need to be renovated, and electric power put in, and charging stations put in. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes right now. The first conversion will be our North Division Garage in Waukegan, which is scheduled to be fully electric by 2026. We'll start receiving those buses, as I said, in March. The first eight are promised to our Waukegan Garage, and then we're going to start spreading them around the region as we complete our facilities. The second initiative is to optimize our system. This includes the implementation of new and innovative services and technology. We're focusing on expansion of our express bus service, very much like we have on I-90. We're looking at I-294 to have service running from Harvey all the way up to the O'Hare area, and some shootoffs from there to Rosemont, et cetera. We also have started our first TNC project, which was launched in DuPage County, where we're using Uber to provide some of our ADA trips in that area. It's a user-side subsidy, meaning the user can choose to use Uber. But what it does is it's relieving some of the pressure we have on our paratransit system because of the fact that Pace, like everybody else, is having a hard time finding drivers. So this is a win for our riders. They can use the service. It frees up our paratransit service, and people are enjoying using Uber. Also, has been more cost-effective than our service, so it's kind of a win-win-win. We're also just launched our new van pool program. It's called Van Go. And we are, have that up in Lake County as a test program, where we're leaving vehicles at the Metro Station. And you can call in advance. You sign up for the service. You can call in advance. And if you're, once you're signed up the day before, you can get off the Metro train and take our vehicle to work and then bring it back. It's one of our first mile, last mile solutions that we've just started to implement. We've also lowered our fares on our van pool program, whereby if you're not going into work every day, you're going to pay about half the fare, because there's a lot of people who are working from home. And the van pool program was set up for a five-day commute. We're now making it set up also for a two-to-three-day commute. We've done a lot with CTA and Metro on fares. We've combined our monthly pass costs. We've reduced them. We've reduced the seven-day monthly pass and the 30-day monthly pass. And on July 1, we will introduce a new Regional Connect Pass, which you can ride Pace to Metro to CTA on one pass for $30. And it's a good value. You can use it at any time, and you can ride all of the services. Technology has been a key to some of the new things that we're working on. We've just completed a major ADA technology software upgrade the end of February. And we're currently working on a procurement for the development of a mobility-as-a-service, known as MaaS, platform, which will provide an app where customers can put in their destination and see all the transit options available in order to provide for an easier trip planning. So it may be if you're riding, you want to ride the fixed route bus to the on-demand service in Hoffman Estates, or you may want to ride it to a bike share. That will all be on one app. So we're just bringing that to our board, and I'm hoping Mayor McLeod will support it at our board meeting on Wednesday. I am, I am. Thank you, I think. So the third initiative that we're working very diligently on is expansion and enhancement of our infrastructure. We talked a little, I talked a little bit about the fact that we need to put an electric electrification in all of our facilities. Bus routes that run here are run either out of our River Division Garage in Elgin or our new, new-to-be Wheeling Garage. Our Wheeling Garage is scheduled to be a CNG bus garage, but it also, we're right now in the process of putting electrification in there. So when it was conceived, we wanted to get away from diesel buses. But now, we're in a stage where we're going to, CNG, we need it because we're going longer distances, but we want to move on to electrification. So we're going to be doing both in that facility. Our River Garage in Elgin was set up to be a diesel bus garage. We have stopped the planning on the diesel bus garage to incorporate electrification, so we can run our diesel buses side by side with electric buses and start moving that facility on to electrification. We also have a lot of ADA expansion transfer facilities. The closest one will be in Schaumburg. We have bought the Schaumburg Post Office, and we're going to convert that into an ADA transfer facility. It's right next to our big bus transfer facility, or, yeah, transit facility.
That's on Mall Drive, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, Whitfield, yeah, okay.
The fourth initiative is the development of an Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, with an emphasis on expanding our DBE participation and ensuring that diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility play a critical role in every decision our agency makes. Why accessibility is so important to me personally is that Pace runs all of the ADA service in the six county region, not only in the suburbs, but in the city of Chicago. That was given to us by the state legislators about 16 years ago. And so it's very important that we keep all that accessible knowledge that we have and spread it throughout our region. The fifth initiative is focusing on hiring and retention. Pace has made a significant effort in this area, working with local workforce development boards, municipalities, and local agencies. And I'd like to actually thank the mayor and the Village of Hoffman Estates, because you're advertising our jobs in your newsletters, and that's very important to us. The other thing we've done is we've partnered with all of Harvey College, which is in the south side of Chicago, where we will pay for training of individuals to get their CDL training, as well as their application complete. And that has been very helpful to us, because we're getting people into the system who really needed some additional help to get their CDLs. We've met with Harper College and a few other colleges, Joliet College, Junior College, and they're very excited about this program. We're going to be implementing a similar program out this way to help feed more people into our system. So this is a very exciting time for Pace. You know, I've been around running fixed route service, and now we get to do some fun, innovative things, as well as the fact we have funding to do some of those things. So it really is a good time to try out these things, see what works, see what doesn't work, and get people back to transportation. I'd also like to take a couple minutes to discuss the services that we have in Hoffman Estates. Currently, Hoffman Estates is served by four fixed routes. Route 554, which provides service between Elgin and the Northwest Transit Center, which the village had helped launch when this, this route was started, and we appreciate the partnership. We also have Route 606, I'm sorry, 603, 605, and 607, which provides service between Randall Road and Rosemont, and are part of Pace's I-90 network. We also serve the village with an on-demand response service, the Hoffman Estates On Demand, which operates near I-90 and Barrington Road Station. So fortunately, we are starting to see ridership come back. Generally, we're at approximately 65% of our pre-pandemic level, carrying about 65,000 riders per weekday, as compared to 100,000 prior to COVID. During the first quarter of 2022, weekday ridership on the routes serving Hoffman Estates were up about 31, 31% compared to the same time last year. So it's a good report. We hope to continue to see those trends, and doing some new innovative things should help that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a very informative report you gave us. Trustee Stanton, you had something?
I do. Have you done a study on how much the electric bus costs are versus the diesel bus?
Yes, we're still doing some studies about it, but I will tell you, just from the bus part of it alone, electric bus costs about $1.2 million. A diesel bus is about $500,000. CNG closer to $700,000. That's the bus alone. So there's a big expense in the, in the capital. And also the infrastructure capital that we have to put in our buildings, and if we have to charge the bus en route, there's also more infrastructure costs. But the, the, the maintenance of the vehicle itself should be less. Again, we have our first bus here. We're just starting to learn about it. We're just starting to really get a feel of it. But if the maintenance is less over the life of the vehicle, by federal law, we must keep a vehicle for 12 years. So over the life of the vehicle, the cost of the bus should be less.
What about, you know, gas kind of costs? I mean, so you go from Rosemont to Randall Road, and costs, you know, let's say $40 for the bus for that route. What would you think the electric cost would be?
Can't answer that yet, because what we're trying to do right now is we're negotiating with ComEd and the state to see if there's a public rate that we can get as a public utility, that we should get a lower rate. So those are some of the things we're just starting to explore.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
I think the mayor had a question.
Mayor? Can you talk a little bit about the paratransit service and how that ridership is going?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. I didn't have it in my notes. But paratransit service is now close to 100% of where it was pre-COVID. Why? Because people who use paratransit really don't have a lot of choice. They need the paratransit service to take them to the doctor, to take them out for grocery shopping, et cetera. So right now, the growth has been very dramatic on paratransit. The problem for us is we don't have enough drivers in the system, if it's on the fixed route side of the house or the paratransit side of the house. We're about 30% below where we should be. So we're looking at some alternatives. For example, in the city of Chicago, we have the Taxi Access Program, where you can take a taxi. It's your choice again. You can take a taxi as opposed to taking the paratransit service. That is giving us some relief from getting everyone on the bus longer ride times, and, you know, they won't get the time that they want to use the service. So I said, in DuPage County, we're trying an Uber as the, as the choice that the riders can take. And in many of our paratransit services, we do use taxis. If the community has taxis, we build them into our service. So if someone's not in a wheelchair, they can use a taxi that we assign out. And we, you know, are using our on-demand service more. For example, in Hoffman Estates, you can take on-demand versus taking our paratransit service.
Thank you. Speaking of the on-demand, how is that going here? Are we getting enough ridership on that to keep it going?
It's starting to build up a little bit more. It's a little bit less than we'd like to see. And one of the things we're going to do is do some more advertising.
That's what I was going to say. People don't know it's out there, I don't think.
We are going to work on that and make sure that they know it's out there. And we'll probably hit Mayor McLeod up again to put some more information in your newsletters. That would be helpful to us.
Okay.
Can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions up here? You know what? We thank you for taking the time and coming tonight on this lovely evening that we ended up having. Sorry, I missed your electric bus.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. And you have a packet in front of you. My card is in there if you have any further questions. And kind of all the information I covered is in there. So if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Drive careful out there.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to reports for information only. Our Transportation Division Monthly Report. Anything to highlight on that? I saw Mr. O'Malley getting up there. Did you need to?
Not the dad.
Okay. Oh, he's up next. That's right. Okay, nothing, Dad. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jennifer, you want to come up to the mic?
Uh-oh. You're on the griddle.
Well, for the people that are going to have their streets done in Hoffman Estates, do you want to explain what's going on and why they're not being done?
Sure. Well, it's all related to the, the local 150 operators union. There, I think they actually, there was a resolution, maybe. But there was, you probably know more about it, but I understand it was disturbing the, the materials that they needed from the quarries. The strike wasn't impacting that. So you may have had more direct contact with our contractors.
Yeah, I don't have an update as far as a resolution yet, but that, it basically was, regionally, industry-wide, any aggregate material which affects, obviously, asphalt plants, the streets, any stone or backfill used on utility projects. So we're kind of in a holding pattern, but I think everybody was hopeful that this was going to be a short-term disruption.
Yeah, that was, that was what we were speculating, but never.
Well, let's hope so. And hopefully now some people out there who are watching know what's going on.
Yeah, I do think it was, there was a little bit of information in the weekly email. So if you were signed up for the weekly email, there was a little bit of information, but certainly we'll continue to, to keep people updated through those sources, through the email. Obviously, our newsflash, if we need to do that.
Right.
Yeah, if there's a sudden change, a resolution, we can, we can push out an email instead of waiting for the normal Friday cycle. So we can, we can try and get something out right away to everybody.
Yeah, probably if this is extending for a while, we should, because not everybody pays attention to that. We may need to actually send something out to those people.
Right. Yeah, we, the, the companies that have the materials were good. When strikes started, they had a little bit of an inventory to, to last for a little while, and they were hoping that things would get resolved quickly, but that didn't happen. So obviously, now we're going to start to see an impact, but yeah.
When did the strike start? Do we know? Do we know?
Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, just last week, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there more than one union striking?
I think there's one union, but there's three, I think, three providers that were impacted by the strike.
Okay.
Yeah, it's spread, and it wasn't the entire, all the aspects of the union, I guess. It was just they were targeting certain
Right.
portions of the, basically, the supply chain that goes into the road and utility building industry. They were kind of selectively targeting, but it spread across the variety of different companies.
Right. Okay.
You tend to, and you tend to sometimes have other unions that honor the strike line too, so that messes it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Mayor?
Yeah, could you work with our communications director, Pete and Jennifer?
Definitely.
Get the information out, because most people aren't aware of it.
Yeah, we'll definitely ramp that up and push information out.
Thank you.
And not just on social media, because some of them, the older residents may not be seeing that.
Yeah, hit them all.
Yeah, we'll do the full.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we will mark that report as received and filed. President's report?
Nothing else, Trustee.
Nothing else? Do we have any other items coming up before this committee right now? I don't see anything, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please do a roll call. Trustee Noem?
Aye.
Trustee Plafis?
Aye.
Chairman Mills?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Mayor McCord?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Hey, Mayor, I have a, my, somebody else read through the agenda.
Yeah, who's the vice chair of finance?
Probably Hannah.
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 I am.
Trustee Gata, you can handle that, can't you?
Sure, I could read it from here. The Finance Committee meeting agenda for June 13th, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Plafis?
Present.
Vice Chairman Noah?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Aye, present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Mayor McCord?
Present.
And we have a quorum. Thank you. Under new business, we have one item. Item number one, request authorization to enter into a five-year contract with Swift for Venue, next to provide point-of-sale cloud-based software and equipment system for food and beverage sales at the Now Arena in the amount not to exceed $130,655.61.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ben, are you going to be, which one of you guys are taking this one?
So the current POS is what I like to call classic. Antique might be a good way to describe it. It's like an abacus with a calculator. So we've had it since '06. It's served us well, but obviously, technology has advanced since 2006, so we've come to end of life. The company actually informed us that come next year, they're no longer servicing it. So they've kind of told us, guys, it's time. So it's been a good system for what it had to do, but really, it could take cash and credit cards. That was really the extent of it. As we've gone through COVID, touchless, credit-only, crypto has become obviously much more in vogue, the current system can't do any of those things. So Yusef with Levy Restaurants and the Windy City Bulls actually put us in contact with a company called Shift Four, who owns a company called Venue Ties, who was running a fairly exceptional program where they were providing POS systems. Essentially, the hardware was free. So they would charge you for the software, and they would charge you for startup costs, but the actual hardware, the POS terminals that you see on the counters, were of no cost to us. And it's something that they're trying to get more of a foothold in the arena market, so it's one of the reasons they're being so aggressive. So thanks to our contact with Levy, and thanks to our contact with the Bulls, we kind of got involved in them pretty early in the process. And I don't know if they're going to keep doing this, but we're pretty fortunate to get involved. So their new system is top of the line. It can do everything. It can take touchless. It can do virtual currency. It can be upgraded to do crypto. So it really is future-proof to, nothing can be truly future-proof, but it is built to last for the next 15 years of whatever currency turns into, whatever that may be. So Yusef with Levy was very pleased. They have it at United Center. We did a walkthrough with the Bulls, with the Levy executives at United Center. We saw it function. So if you've been to the United Center in the last two years?
Two years.
In the last two years, you would have seen their new POS systems. They've been exceptionally happy with all new technologies. Obviously, there's a learning curve, but they feel by and large, of all the systems that are out there, and there's quite a few nowadays because everyone's getting into this space, this was superior to the competition. In addition to that, it's also the least expensive. So I just wanted to highlight, I know on the memo, it says $130,000. That is the aggregate of the five-year term. So every POS system charges you a software fee. So just so you don't think that it's a new 130 that we're not paying currently, our current system, the old system that really can do almost nothing, that costs us about $16,000 a year right now. We also have to maintain a server. So really, over five years, we spend about $90,000 on the old system that's limited. So it's really comparing $130,000 to the existing $90,000, not zero to $130,000. Just want to make that clear, that we have ongoing costs for the current POS system. So the new POS would be cloud-based. We would not have to maintain a server. There wouldn't be concerns about the server crashing or having a single point of failure during a show. It's never happened before, but obviously, God forbid. So the $130,000, you divide that by five, really, all we're paying for is the annual software costs and the startup cost to actually have the techs come, install everything, program it, and then some. So it's, for what we're getting, an exceptionally great deal. We looked into this about two years ago, and it was running about $230,000 to $300,000 out of pocket just to get the hardware. So the fact that we're 130, which is really mostly software over five years, so really, it's $20,000 a year, this is the best tech in the market, we feel, and by far, the best financial deal. So it's going to allow us to do a lot more things, mainly, right now with Chicago Bulls, if you've ever bought a ticket, we do offer a family four-pack. Right now, and this is, you know, in the sports space, for the last 10 years, they've been doing what's called a loaded ticket. So you purchase online, and then you get a ticket to the game, and you get a ticket to exchange your ticket for food. We can't do that. So we're actually limited in the products we can offer on behalf of the Bulls. So this alone will allow us to give the Bulls more opportunities to sell tickets, to sell family four-packs. And obviously, as we get a comfort level with the new system, we'll find other ways to monetize different products that we normally couldn't sell. So this system integrates with Ticketmaster, so that kind of leaves it open to all kinds of fun, new possibilities. Obviously, it'll take us some time to get used to it, but like, this is a home run. Financially, functionality, we're really pleased, and we're pretty excited. The timing would be, we would get through Labor Day weekend. We then do the transition in October, and then we would be ready with the new POS system come the first game of the Bulls, which I believe is November 5th, 4th, 4th or 5th? I'm looking at the season ticket holder. You didn't get the email yet? So it's the, it's the first Friday or Saturday of November.
I think you're right.
Yeah, something like that. So anyway, really, I take any questions, but we're really, we're pleased with financials. We're pleased with the partnership. And on top of all that, they are giving us a $5,000 cash sponsorship in addition to. So they're effectively paying us to take the system, which usually they don't do. But any questions around the board?
Any questions from the board?
We might have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe it's for Bennett. Do we have enough in the SPO to cover the whole, all upfront?
Gary, you broke up a little bit. Do you want to do that one more time?
Say it, talk slower.
Or faster.
Do we have enough, I think, in the SPO?
I think he's asking you, do we have enough money upfront to cover this? Is that what you're asking, Gary?
SPO.
Yeah, so there's a couple options. So the company, you know, they give you two proposals. One is you pay for the $130,000, which includes the startup costs, the tax, all upfront, or you can spread the payment out over the five-year term. So there's no difference financially, it's just more of a cash flow. I think the question was, do we have cash available to do the 130 upfront? I would defer to Dan O'Malley on that.
Yeah, the, you know that we've, the board knows that we've received the money through the Shutter Venues Grant. So we, that has freed up some money for us to do capital improvements. This could fit into that if you wanted to spend $130 upfront. When you look at the contract that's in front of you, you're going to pay about $48,000 upfront, and as Bennett mentioned, that's $20,000 for the annual software cost, and then there's the upfront equipment cost to it. The way that
Startup cost.
Startup cost, sorry. So that's the structure of it. We pay about 48, the village would pay about $48,000 upfront, and then $20,000 over the next four years. From a cash flow standpoint, I think that makes sense to do it that way, because we can look at other projects that we have for that upfront money. And then you're going to have a consistent amount that we're paying over the next four years. And then come the end of that five-year contract, we're probably going to look at, either looking at a new system or just updating what those software costs are going to be. And from a budget standpoint, it would keep things a little more consistent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Karen Mills?
So in other words, there's no interest for stretching it out over the five years? Same payments if we did it all at once or spread it out, right?
Yeah, they don't give you any kind of breaks if you pay lump sum upfront.
No, but I'm saying, but there's no penalty.
No, no, there's no penalty.
If we do stretch it out to five years.
Yeah, I would say this, that one of the concerns we have is just as we get deeper into this kind of period of inflation, the food industry is getting hit even harder, everything food-wise. So we just know that more relief we can give to the F&amp;B budget, it is beneficial. You know what I mean? So if we can take the software expense off the annual books, it looks, appearance-wise, just to be a stronger budget, but really, we're just paying upfront, but we gain nothing from it. So it's more just aesthetics appearance, you know, in terms
So are you recommending we not do it over five years?
I would say, I am concerned that as the inflation goes up, our budgets will get more strained. So if we can pay things upfront and just get them off the books, that's better in terms of just looking at our annual budget. But obviously, you don't save any money, you don't spend any more money, whether you do it lump sum or over the period of five years. It's more of a cash flow. If you have
They can't change the, oops, we need to charge more for the next four years.
No, 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 no. It's all fixed. Like I said, they gave it to you as an option. I guess some companies do take it as lump sum, just to be done with it and have the software costs paid off. But again, I defer to the board of how they want to pay for it. But no, there is no cost to doing it any differently. It's going to be $102,000 in software costs, regardless of if we pay it all at one point.
So the motion right now is to pay the entire amount upfront? No, okay.
It's just a not to exceed. So we wouldn't have to come back to you for, if annual payments were to exceed $20,000, we have your full authorization.
Right. Up to 130.
Up to 130, right.
The way it's presented to you now is the five-year contract, the $48,000 in the first year, and then the $20,000 each year. And again, just from a budgeting standpoint, when we come to the end of the five-year, had we paid it upfront, we're going to have a $20,000 hit to our budget when we start that next year. And if we just keep it consistent where we are, that's why from, I look at it from a budgeting standpoint and say, I'd rather just keep the expense flat.
It is Plafis.
You wanted to say something, Plafis?
Yeah, my preference is we pay it all upfront.
Mayor?
I don't know. The way inflation is going, I think we should take advantage of the whole five years, that we're paying less money.
I would agree on that too. Corporate counsel, you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, the price is going to be the same under the option of paying over five years or paying it all upfront. Obviously, what that means, when you make payments over a number of years, the present value of paying over the years is less than paying it all upfront. If you consider that, in effect, we'll be using their money. But what's most important with these type of contracts is we're not buying goods. We're paying 130, the village would be paying $130,000, and we're getting a promise that these computer services will be provided in the next five years. It's not like you pay extra money and you get a fire truck and you have the fire truck. So the village would be paying $130,000, and we might or might not get those services over the next five years. Companies go out of business, things happen, and normally, what this village does, when we pay upfront or we enter into a contract where somebody is promising to do something in the future, in order to protect the taxpayers, it's customary for us to get performance bonds to ensure if we do pay that money, we actually do get the services, or a bonding company comes in and reimburses us. That's the main reason why I think you should consider that factor when deciding if you want to prepay or not. The village is not prepaying and getting what they're paying for today. They're prepaying, and they're getting a promise that somebody is going to provide something over the next five years. And if they break that promise, what is available, or what is the recourse of the village? So I think the board should also consider that.
Thank you. Trustee Mills?
One other question. Does, does this include maintenance costs for anything, or is that automatically included?
Yeah, no. So one of the other attributes that I forgot to mention is, so they will replace all hardware, as long as we didn't hit it with a sledgehammer or throw it in a, we've done that. They'll replace all hardware for five years. So terminal goes down, starts acting wonky, we send it back, they send us a new one, no questions asked, no cost to us. So that is included. I mean, that's a pretty thorough warranty, so, you know, we've operated with this system since '06. Tills go down, and it gets expensive. So I can tell you, we had a bunch of tills that, this is probably about four years ago, the updated the credit card processing policies worldwide, some of the tills are so ancient, we spent about $33,000 just replacing tills. So that is a huge benefit, that those are guaranteed to be replaced regardless, again, not, no sledgehammers. So yeah, so that is covered.
How about software?
Software-wise, I mean, Yusef can speak to the software deals we have now, but I assume it's a license like you get from Microsoft. It just works. I mean, if there's bugs, we call them, they fix it. But it's very much like, you pay an annual license, the software supports their operating system, and either it works or it doesn't. Software itself shouldn't break. It's a turnkey program. Solution, correct. And it's ever-evolving. So since the United Center got it, they've added like functionality and assets as the United Center has asked for them. So it's not, with Quest, that was the POS we had before. You got it. It stayed the same way for nearly 20 years. This system seems to evolve as the industry needs different things. So it really is of a level much different than anything we've ever seen before. So I think I, even in my description, only scratching the surface of what this could turn into, but, you know, the, they sent us a very large PowerPoint of all the things. I could barely understand how you pay for things through pictures of monkeys digitally, but like, the world is changing in terms of how people use currency, so this till is So this, this till is meant to kind of align with where money is going to go. And at some point, we may decide that we go cashless. I mean, that's something that some buildings have done, that either cash is not spent anywhere, it's good for fraud control, it's faster. We don't do it because we think our demographics, you know, some still prefer cash, we're not ready for that, but this system is meant for buildings that are completely digital. So that's kind of where the future would go, I would think. And also, we, right now, our employees, they handle the credit cards, they run it. That's not usually industry standard anymore. They want the customer to put the credit card in. So this all aligns with where, like, the gold standard of companies are, is like, they're handling the credit cards, we're not touching it, we're avoiding the fraud. If we can avoid cash handling in the future, that would be even better. But yeah, from a warranty standpoint, that's, they're promising hard work is covered for the five-year term.
The only other thing I would say is, and I tend to agree with what the mayor and council says, technically, $20,000 is worth a lot more now than it will be in five years.
100%, yeah.
So why not take advantage of it?
Unless they were giving us a sizable discount for lump sum payment upfront, which I asked, I said, is there any upside here? They're like, no, just some people opt to do it.
And as long as there's no way that they can add on anything to make it more expensive over the five years, I'd go with that.
Oh, absolutely. Trustee?
Yeah.
Arnett?
I was just looking at the other two companies that you guys bet out, and I think we're getting a much better advantage with Shift Four than the other two companies looking at the comparison of price-wise. But I also agree with going with the yearly instead of paying upfront.
Thank you. And then, you know what, it seems to me also, I would just as soon take the five years and to pay $20,000 a year for five. Exactly what the mayor and corporate counsel was saying. I mean, that's just my opinion on that. Trustee Plafis?
I just-
What do you, what do you, you had said to pay, in your estimation, you would like us to pay the whole thing off at one time?
Well, the reason I say that is because I don't want to see the arena start in a negative hole anymore than what they start every year anyway.[1686.12]